And. All right, we are recording now. All right, so this is the 2021 AP exam. This is number six. This is a differential equations question, which I think you will see. Differential equations, right in, right out, and particle motion are three that I'm a little bit more confident. That we'll see. Um. And I think I may. Yeah, we'll do this. We'll do questioning. Ah, this would be so much easier if I was in my classroom. I don't like working on my laptop. Perfect. Alright, hopefully you'll get a slope field question. Because these are nice. These are what I consider one of the more straightforward types of questions you can get on the AP exam. A slope field, that is. One thing you have to look out for is that a lot of times they will take a differential equation and add all types of context to it and give you this huge paragraph. This one's not too bad, but they do add some context to this, which tends to get in the way of our ability to process the problem. Uh, I'll shrink that up a little bit more. Uh, so we have a medication is being administered to the patient. Where's my pen? Let's see if I'm gonna work. I can't find my pen. Well, that's no good. Didn't I just have it in my hand? Hey, y'all hang on. Okay, I haven't moved. Ah, there it is. Was it way over there? Oh, okay. Alright, so this one, we have a differential equation that models uh uh the rate, let's see, the amount of medication in a patient. So uh, the amount is the function A of T, and this is the derivative of that amount. This is the differential equation that models the amount of medicine in the patient, and we start off with a very straightforward, nice question. Uh, we have a slope field, and they want you to sketch a solution that goes through a point. So definitely go through the point. The origin is right here. So make sure if you're supposed to hit the origin, you actually hit the origin, and then we follow the slopes. Uh, and notice there is what's called an equilibrium solution right here. Right there, we have a row of zero slopes. And if you look at the differential equation, I can tell that this derivative will equal zero, that will equal zero when Y, that's not a Y, when Y is equal to zero. Uh, Y equals 12, I mean. And so this is gonna be Y equals 12 up here. You don't really need to know that. I'm just pointing out that that's where the zeros are happening. And that zero row, that row of zero slopes is important because as we get closer and closer to that row of zeros, rows, that row will act as a horizontal last and tote, and they probably will count off. I know they did in a recent year. If you come all the way up and actually touch that, they probably will count off because you're not gonna touch that. You're gonna approach that. Uh, so make sure that you stay below that, and you wanna just kind of follow the general trend of the slopes. And make sure you draw your slope, your solution until you get out of the slope field. Uh, I'm gonna get rid of the arrows. Not that big of a deal, but I don't like it there. Uh, so there's that one. That was a nice one. And then number B is a limit. Although I don't know what number this is. Y'all have your free response packet. This is what, 2021? This is gonna be near the back. Um, if you wanted to find a hard copy of this. Um. And I should have done that on a new page. Okay. Move over, paste, and I need to grab the context because this question asks us about a limit, and we're interpreting the meaning of this limit. And so the limit as T goes to infinity of A of T is 12. And I'm basically going to just write in words what a limit is. Um. Sorry. And so we have A of T. A of T, I wanna see what A of T is described as. A is the amount of medication in the patient. Hang on, my dog is scratching. I didn't go let my dog in. He's gonna keep scratching. I'll be right back. Alright, I'm back. Um, and so A of T is described as the amount of medication in the patient. Uh, and it is measured in milligrams, so the units to this is gonna be milligrams, so 12 milligrams. Uh, and I would simply say, uh, as time goes on without bound or increases without bound. As we're going to infinity, you could probably even say as time goes to infinity. A of T is approaching 12. Um, bound, bound, um, A of T, and I'm gonna write the words for A of T, the amount of medication. And the patient approaches, it doesn't actually get there, but it approaches. And if I imagine if you said equals 12, um, that might be held against you because the limits are what you were approaching, not what you equal. The amount of medication in the patient approaches 12, and the units would be milligrams. So there's um. You can my chat in case you think I just throw in questions up. Um, so that's really all I'm gonna do on that one. But uh, and I do think if you said as time approaches infinity, the amount of medication the patient approaches 12 milligrams would be fine. Um, and then that gets us to question C, and I think C might be a standalone problem, and it is. So always be on the lookout for questions like this. Uh, a lot of times parts A and B may be confusing, and you get this, this discouraged. And so what we can do sometimes is just skip them and read part C, read part D, because it might be a completely independent question. And they gave you everything you need to answer part C. Answer part C without even knowing the rest of the context of the problem. So we, it says you separation of variables. We're gonna find the solution to this differential equation. And when you're solving a differential equation, your first step is always to separate the variables, and I'm gonna do this in baby steps. I'm going to start by multiplying by the DT. And now I noticed that I have a 12 minus Y on the right side, and I have a DY on the left. I need to get that Y term over. And you might could do this in one step. Um. I think to make this a little bit easier to see, I'm gonna write this as one third times 12 minus Y. Cause then the separation's a little bit easier to see. We need to divide by the 12 minus Y. And now I have my equation fully separated. That would be worth one point. Uh, you could move the three over as well, and you could have three over 12 minus Y. But generally, when I'm separating my, my variables, I always want to um move as little as possible to that Y side of the equation. Uh, now we find the antiderivatives. Right side should be pretty nice. I was supposed to be green. Is that green? I don't know. Um. The right side's really nice. The antiderivative of one third would be one third T plus a constant, I'll forget the plus C. The left side is also kind of nice. If I put a negative one in the numerator, my numerator becomes the derivative of the denominator, which means I need to put a negative one outside to account for that change, and the left side antiderivative is negative natural log of 12 minus Y. And that's our second point. So we get one point for correctly separating. We get one point for separating uh, for finding the antiderivatives. Every now and then they'll give you two points for antiderivatives if one side is really tricky, like maybe one side requires you substitution or something. These two were fairly nice, convenient antiderivatives. I'm gonna come over here, and we need to solve for C. We have an initial condition, zero, zero. When I plug in zero for T, the amount of medicine is zero. And if I plug those values in, I'd have negative natural log of 12 minus zero is one third T plus C, which means C is the negative natural log of 12. That is worth one point. And a reminder, when you're doing these on the actual AP exam, this is when, whoa, this is when you will abandon ship on this problem. You're gonna go on to the next problem. Do not try to get that fourth point until you have answered everything else um as well as you think you can. Um, and so uh, I'm gonna go ahead and finish solving this one, but on the AP exam, you wouldn't go on it and come back to this later after you answer the rest of the questions. So I plugged my value of C back into the equation, and so I have negative natural log of 12 minus Y equals one third T minus the natural log of 12. And now we need to solve for Y. We will have to E F I both sides. However, you need to make sure that you have only a natural log on that left side. So uh, I'm gonna start by moving that negative over any coefficient of the log, whether it's a multiplying coefficient or if they had like something like 12 plus the natural log, now that'd be really weird. Um, but you have to make sure you have only the natural log before you start doing your E trick. And so I'm gonna move that negative over, make that negative one third T, make that a positive natural log of 12. Now I'm gonna raise both sides to the E. Make both sides exponent on E, and so I have 12 minus Y is E to the negative one third T plus the natural log of 12. And to finish solving for Y, I need to subtract the 12, and then multiply both sides by negative one, which ends up being um, 12 minus E to the negative one third T plus the natural log of 12. And that is all of that work. This was all work, a single point, which is exactly what I've been telling you all year to um to just to not even try that point, come back to it later. Um, you should be able to do it, and hopefully you'll have time to come back and, and get that last point, but let's get uh the other easier, less labor intensive points that are out there. Uh, this equation right here, this piece. I need to fix my green. That's supposed to be green. Does that look green on the other screen? Like, it is green on the other screen. It's just a stupid external monitor, whatever. Okay, that piece, you can write that as E to the negative one third T times E to the natural log of 12, and E to the natural log of 12 is just 12, which means the whole solution could be written as 12 minus 12E to the negative one third T. You definitely don't need to do that on the AP exam, but if it's a multiple choice question, they very well may do that with your solution. So you need to be able to, to tweak that. Um. Let me be able to tweak that answer so that it looks like whatever the answer choices are. Hmm, let's see. What are we thinking? What are we thinking? Um, anything else? Yeah, there are job any topics you want me to go over? I just randomly chose that one. I mean, it wasn't random. I looked at the, the trends on the AP exam. Where are my trends? This sheet. Which this, uh, if you're interested in this document, and there's a BC version as well. I saw Kinsey joined in a minute ago, and Sam is here. Anybody else BC? Joined in yet? I used to be really good at this Google Meet stuff. Now I can't see who else here. Ah, here we go. Uh. One, two, three, four, five of you. Alright, um. Joe Beck's chat. Can we go over volume again? Yes, and that is exactly what Luke Upston is asking for. So let's talk about some volume problems. Um. Let's see, where's the volume column? Okay, so you'll notice a long time ago, really not that long ago, the area volume question, that's this left column right here, the very first column. They used to always, always ask an area volume problem. I mean, every single year, 2000, all the way up to 2015. Those 16 years, they asked a full-on area volume question. Then in 2016, they started getting a little bit different. They only asked a single, it's like part five B, and then one C. So they really broke uh tradition there, and um then last year, 2022, number two was almost all area volume, but uh, let's see, let's look at. I'm trying to remember what, which ones we've done. Uh, it doesn't really matter. I may do, y'all have calculators. Everybody should have a calculator. I think I'm gonna look at a calculator active problem. Uh, this is from 2012, number two. Let's see what this one looks like. Um, that's not a bad one. It's not a bad one. We have done this one before. I remember, I remember this question. Look at that one, and I'm gonna give y'all a minute. I'm gonna pause myself. I'm gonna give y'all a minute to look at this one. 2002. Oh, y'all don't have a hard copy. This is not on their packet. Y'all want me to find one that you have in your packet, or are you okay just reading the problem off the screen? Or do you care? This is fine. Okay, thanks. Alright, let's just do this one. This is from 2012. I think y'all were born in 2012. Um, and I'm gonna get this screenshotted, and I'll give you a minute to maybe think about what you're gonna do. This is a calculator question, although yeah, you're definitely gonna need a calculator to answer some of these. So, alright, so I'm gonna get this screenshotted for you, and um. Oh, we all need to read the problem. I'll be, maybe I'll read the problem too, don't you? Let's see, how am I gonna do this? I'll move this over here. And I'll leave the problem like that, so you can read it. Alright, so uh, are you ready to start talking about this one? Okay, so let's talk. Uh, the area of region R. Now, this is a calculator question, which gives you options on this one. Um, and oh, no, I need my calculator. This is not the same problem I was thinking about. I don't think we have done this one. Um, we are going to need to find that intersection. Where's my? Um, these functions are very, very, very clean. I have talked all about defining and storing functions on your calculator. Uh, I probably wouldn't do that on this one. I'm just gonna go straight to my graph screen. How long has it been since I turned it up, since I turned on this calculator? And your calculator, I've, I've shown you all, your calculator does have a built-in area finder on the graph screen, but keep in mind that you do have to um make sure you have all of your work shown. Uh, and, and you can't just write down an answer. So anyway, so we have the natural log of X, and then we have five minus X. And I'm going to find that intersection. So menu, analyze, intersection, and I am getting an intersection of my calculator. Ah, man, I really wish I had a. Why is Mason, is he trying to join without a? Yeah, he's keeping coming. Um. There we go. Alright, so, oh, I wonder how old this will work. Can y'all read that? Oh, no, I gotta take off my, visitors are in the meeting. Mason, you joined from an outsider account. Uh, let's see, I wanna turn off my background. How do I turn off my background? Apply visual effects? Is that what it is? Background. I want none. Remove. There we go. Um, alright, so my calculator, whoops, is only displaying, see if y'all can see that. My calculator is only displaying uh 3.69. That can be a problem because you don't, you definitely want to be able to see um. You definitely wanna see more than that. Now, for this question, because part A is asking me for the area, it's okay for me to write three points, about 3.69. It's okay for me to say that um these two graphs equal each other, so I'm gonna write natural log of X is equal to five minus X at X equals 3.69. Um, and I'm gonna store that for A. I'm gonna store that for A at X equals 3.69. It's okay to go to two decimals on this one because that's not my final answer. Um, this is just like a little intermediate step. They're not asking for the intersection, so you can use two decimals on that. However, I don't like that my calculator is not displaying more, so I'm gonna see if I can do this. Um, see, I need to hit the menu button, and to see more decimals, there are two ways. You can do it. You can hit menu, and then you want to go down to settings. That's option number eight. So I'm gonna choose eight, and then in settings, you want that float to be six. On the graph screen, I like float six. So I'm gonna arrow over, and you wanna make sure you're seeing a lot of decimals. So I'm gonna go floats. I'm trying to read this. It's hard to read because it's mirrored for me. Float six. I'm gonna hit enter. Um, I said hit enter. There we go. Hit enter again. And now I'm seeing a lot more decimals. Uh, another option is you can mouse over, and if you hold the, the cursor over that X coordinate, and I press the plus button. So I'm gonna hit the plus button. As I hit the plus button, it will add digits to it. So if you wanna see more, if you hit minus, it'll subtract digits. But if you want to see more of decimals on the graph screen, that's another way to do it. I, I am also gonna store that. So now I'm gonna click on it. So mouse over, there's a tag on it. Click on it. It's highlighted, and then I go control, store. I'm storing that X coordinate for A, and if you do that correctly, it will bolden that X coordinate. And so what I'm thinking most of y'all probably would have done for this one is we found that intersection, and if we're doing the area under these curves, we have um, we would have to break it up at that 3.69 spot. So I'll have to do the antiderivative, and that first graph is the natural log of X. The X will do that from one to 3.69. And then I will add to that. Um, and that is a triangle, however. I, I think it's better just because it's such a stupid intersection. It's not a nice whole number. I think I'm just gonna do the antiderivative of 3.69 to five, and that is the line five minus X. The X, and then we can throw that in the calculator, and that will give us the area. Um, did y'all try to do it this way? Is this what y'all's thought process was, or did you think to do something different? Because there is a different way that I think would be even easier. Did we do anything different? Okay, because the other option, and I always want you to think about this, um. Is we could have, instead of doing two antiderivatives and splitting it at that intersection, we could have gone right to left, because if I do right curve to left curve, right minus left, every single place I draw that horizontal line, I'm always going from the five minus X line to the natural log of X graph. And I can get all of that in one antiderivative. So my second option for A is I could do the antiderivative of my right curve minus the left curve. The problem, and it's not really a problem, um, but what that does though is it creates a DY situation. So if I'm gonna do right minus left, I've got to turn both of these equations into X equals a function of Y. This one's not gonna be bad. We would add the X and subtract the Y, so that ends up being X equals five minus Y, and that's my right boundary. My left boundary, if Y is equal to the natural log of X, X would equal E to the Y. And if this were a, excuse me, if this were a non-calculate problem, you would have to do it this way because you don't know unless you really remember your parts. Um, and if you're BC, you should be able to do the antiderivative of natural log of X. But the antiderivative of L and X is a parts problem. And so if this were a non-calculate question, I see Mason, hang on a second. Um, if this were a non-calculate question, you would really need to change it to E to the Y, that's a much easier antiderivative. Uh, Mason, this is uh from the 2012 AP exam. Y'all don't have a uh. I don't think y'all have a hard copy of this one. Um, and so, so you could Google it if you wanna pull up another browser or window. You can just search for the 2012 AP calculus questions, and um, and that's where this one's coming from. Uh, so you know, so we have that set up. Uh, back to the right minus left, the other thing to keep in mind is that would also, everything is DY, so we are going from zero this time because the bottom is at Y equals zero. I now need the Y coordinate of that top boundary, so I'll have to go back to my calculator. And the Y coordinate is one, can y'all see that? Yeah, there's my Y coordinate. It's 1.306. 1.306. Um. And I would store that one, so I would now go to my calculator, and I would say, uh, store that. Um, control store, and I guess I'll store that for B. Um. One point, let's say 306, yeah. 1.306, and that's stored for B. Um. And I'm going to assume y'all can throw that in calculator. Is that, is that okay? Do I need to punch that in and actually show you the answer? Of course, you can Google uh the answer as well, since you know this is the 2012 problem. Uh, number B, region R is the base of a solid. Each cross-section perpendicular to the X axis is a square. So perpendicular to the X axis is a square. I like these problems because um perpendicular to the X axis tells you this is a DX problem. The fact that it's a square means we're going to do the antiderivative of side length squared. This is with respect to X. And we again are gonna have the same situation that we had the first time we set up uh for the area, and that is that the boundaries, the function that is determining the side length of the square, changes at that intersection at X equals 3.69. So we'll have to do uh for this first section, your side length is the natural log of X. For this piece over here, the side length is your function five minus X, and we'll have to do two different antiderivatives. Um, and so that would lead to the antiderivative from one to 3.69 of that side length, natural log of X squared. Put your DX to finish the antiderivative, and then we'll add to that 3.69 to five of that side length, which is five minus X all squared, and you're done with that one. So part B was actually pretty nice because you didn't have to actually solve it. And we had already done the uh, the antiderivatives or the, the intersection from part A onto C. C is the main reason I wanted to do this one. The first two questions were fairly common, uh, area between two curves and then uh, a known cross-section. Those are very common questions. And this next one, part C, not quite as common, but I've seen it a lot, and so I wanted to make sure we knew what to do here. It says we have a horizontal line that divides R into two regions of equal area. that divides R into two regions of equal area. So we have a horizontal line here that divides the region R into two regions of equal area. And they want you to set up an equation involving one or more integrals. Yeah. I'm trying to think of what all the options are. We're trying to find the value of k. Hmm. What are y'all thinking? Do y'all have any thoughts? Right now I only see one way to do it that's gonna be convenient. Cuz I think this one, we're gonna have to go the dy route. Um. Because if I wanted to do like top minus bottom. I have three regions now. I have that region and then all of this. And then we have this region here. If I wanted to try to do that, now up here, we would only have the two. We have this one and then this one between that line and the, and the top. The issue we're gonna have is that since this is an unknown y coordinate. We're not gonna be able to get this intersection to know where to cut off those top minus bottom anti-derivatives. And so instead of doing top minus bottom, I really think the only way we're gonna do this is with right minus left. Which this is where if you recognize the right minus left option in part A, that's gonna make part C a lot easier because you've already kind of geared yourself towards uh, thinking that way. And always think for a minute if you can do right minus left cuz there are times like this where it, where it ends up helping you. And so I'm gonna do this bottom area right here. And the the left curve was e to the y, the right curve was x equals five minus y. And I can do the anti-derivative of right. Five minus y minus left, e to the y, dy. And this bottom piece is going from zero to y equals k. From zero to y equals k. And then if that line, if that horizontal line is dividing us into two equal areas, then that would equal the area from k to one of that same right minus left, we're still going from the same right minus left. So that'll be five minus y minus e to the y. By and it says right, but do not solve an expression. So there we go. That, that is written and it is not solved and um. That's one way to do it. The only other way, and you're still gonna have to go right minus left. The other way to do this would be if we actually knew the area. If we actually knew that area and we had a number value for that, then we could take that area value from part A. And instead of using this integral, we could say that that area would equal half of whatever the answer to question A is. And so you could actually use the numeric value. Um. I, I kind of like using the two integrals, but since we're not solving it, it really doesn't matter on this one. How do we feel? Good, bad, ugly? Why is the other variable one? Are you talking about right here? How often will we see that same type of problem? It is not necessarily hard, but it takes some outside thinking. Um. Hang on on that question. Uh, let's see. So why is that one? Because I'm doing the area, I'm doing two areas. I forget this thing doesn't erase that way. I'm doing the area uh, for this bottom piece right here. And because I'm doing right minus, actually I need to redo this. Because I'm doing right minus left. This bottom area, I'm starting down here at y equals zero and I'm going up to k for this right minus left region. And then for the second right minus left region above the horizontal line, right here. I'm going from y equals k, uh, y equals k. We don't know that k value. And we're stopping at not one, it's not one. It's not one, is it? The error count has already been um. Finalized. I thought, I think Friday was my last day, but you were right. That shouldn't be one. What should it be? Ooh, man, I wonder how many people did that? This upper limit right here, we're going up to this y coordinate right there. We're not going to one. We need to go to that y coordinate. That is the intersection and that was one point three zero six. Is that why you were asking why it was one? That should be one point three zero six. Nice. There we go. Um. So there's that one. Uh, Luke, how often do we see this? Was that you who asked that? I think it was, yes. Um. Frequently enough that, that I thought it was worth spending time on it right now. Uh, we can, like, let me just look at these, the last few area volume ones. Let's look at 2022. I know we did this one recently. That was number two. Let's look at the questions on this one. Um, ew, that's a lot of words. Let's see, find the area. So here they did not do it in 2022, 2021. This was a non-calculate question in 2021. There's number three. And that's the spinning toy problem. Ooh, that was a bad one. Uh, they did not do it that year. 2019. What number was that one? 2019, number five. Um. And they did not do it that year. So, so there's three in a row where I didn't see it. Let's go back to like 2015, number two. Um. Again, they didn't do that. And so, so, so it's not, it's not really common. So I, I mean, I just clicked on four and I didn't see one. I'll click one more. This is 2014. Number two on 2014. Uh. And here, the vertical line x equals k divides R into two. So there, we finally got one. We went, went to 2014. Um. For the last time they asked that, at least in free response. I don't have access to the multiple choice question. So I don't know if they've done it in multiple choice world, but, but it, it's, it's something that I have seen. Uh, usually it is a like right here again, right, but do not solve an equation. Usually these setups end up being really difficult to solve. So a lot of times it's just a setup type question. Um, are we good? Was that a good area volume one? Is that a good area volume one? Um, I added, where's my question? I added a part D. There was not a part D on this one, but I added this one while I was screenshotting everything earlier. I wanna take that region R and we're gonna revolve it around the line x equals one. And let's see how we'll get the volume of that into my axis of rotation is right here. Here's x equals one. Why did it do that? I'm trying to draw this nice and pretty. Good enough. Alright, so there's my axis of rotation. Spinning around that line. Right, but do not evaluate. An integral that finds the volume of that. So uh, if it's a revolution type problem. If it's a revolution type problem, and I think somebody up here did ask for a dishwasher when I was like, yes, that was you, Luke. Um, if it's a revolution problem, we're always gonna go discs or washers. Always, always, always. I don't think I taught the ABs shells at all. I think I mentioned it one day in BC. Don't use shells. If you happen to know it. So um, the, what we have to ask is, is this a disc or is this a washer? And if there's ever empty space, like my bounded region is right here. Sadly, you're not, I don't think you're allowed to take highlighters into the AP exam. But um, there's our bounded region and there is definitely empty space between the axis of rotation and that bounded region. And so uh, so that is what creates a washer. And a washer. The area is pi times big R squared minus little r squared. And you always draw your radius from the axis of rotation. This is where we're spinning. So that's gonna be the center of my circular cross-sections, my washer cross-sections. Draw your radius from the axis of rotation to the boundaries. And this is gonna be a little bit confusing cuz I'm gonna call that a capital R for the big radius. And capital R is already used for the region. They're not gonna hold that against you. Uh, big R for your large radius is so common, they will not combat against you. Um, I wish they wouldn't even call it region R. I don't know why they don't just call them all region A or B or something like that. So it's not big radius. My little radius is gonna go axis of rotation to the near boundary. And as I'm looking at those radii, they are horizontal, which means if I extended them, they would be perpendicular to the y axis, which makes this a dy situation. And because it's dy, we need to use our equations that are in terms of y. X equals e to the y and x equals five minus y. And for my large radius. That's going to be right point minus left point. My right point is on the line, five minus y. My left point is on the line, x equals one. And that would actually clean up to four minus y if you wanna do that. My little radius. My right point is on the graph of x equals e to the y. My left point is on the vertical line, x equals one, and that doesn't clean up any. And then we'll take all of that information and throw that into an anti-derivative, pi anti-derivative of big R that cleaned up to four minus y squared minus little r, which is e to the y minus one squared. And my limits of integration are zero to that y coordinate where they ended, where they intersect, intersected, I mean, and that y coordinate was one point three oh six. And there is your set, setup with the washer. We good on that one? We good? Um, I should write AP questions. I kinda liked that question, D. Alright, what else? What else? Why is that open? What other ones should we look at? Any other topics? Um. You wanna do a Kahoot? We can do a Kahoot. I actually put together a Kahoot of like twenty second questions. Uh, yes, we can do a series error question and that'll be a um, a chance for you ABs to go take a nap or something. Um. I did put together in class, uh, in class during school Friday, a, I think I got to fourteen or fifteen questions. My goal was to have like thirty and I just didn't have time to get in further than fourteen or fifteen. But it's a Kahoot that has very simple, straightforward questions. Uh, they can be answered within twenty and thirty seconds. And so I will make that available for you if you wanna click through that. Uh, and, and it's, it's just big picture stuff or, or very quick derivatives. Like, hey, what's the derivative of secant x? Those types of things that should be immediate. Uh, and while I'm talking in generalities. There is, if you go to my website, if you um, go to my calendar and you click on the home at the top right here. You will see uh, cool documents that come in handy at the very bottom. The cram sheet is the one that I gave you a hard copy of. This, everybody has this. Now this is the unedited one. Um. I tweaked them for BC and AB. So this has everything in it. It even has some stuff you don't need to know like inverse secant, inverse cosecant. That's not on the AP exam anymore. So you don't even worry about that. Surface area of revolution is no longer on the AP exam. You don't need to worry about that. Shell method, no longer on the AP exam. So, so if you look at this one, keep in mind there are some things you don't need to know. That's why I edited one and gave you the uh, 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 hard copy of one that um. That doesn't have all that extra information. So that is there. There's also, based on my experience with third period last Thursday. Um, derivative and integral rules, the, the top link here. All of these. Just memorize derivatives, derivative of sine, derivative of cosine, derivative of tangent. Derivative of inverse cotangent, inverse tangent. Keep in mind secant and cosecant are not on the AP exam. So just don't worry about those. And then down here, we also have uh, memorized anti-derivatives as well, including those uh, that's a little bit different. Uh, inverse trig things, uh, some u sub type of stuff. Uh, so I'm going to find, is arc length not on the AP? Except for you, it is. For you, it is, Mason. Um, is, since it's not on the, it wasn't, I think it was on there. Um, let me find the cram sheet. If, if, I hope I didn't take it off of yours cuz arc length definitely is, it's right here. So there's arc length and that is on the BC exam. You do need to know that. Um, similarly, total distance, if you look down here on this one, I guess I could zoom in so I could actually see that better. Where's my zoom? Right here, uh, AB, the only distance you need to know for total distance is this one, that's the anti-derivative of the absolute value velocity. BC, you also need to be able to do the parametric version of that. Uh. Which is initial time to final time of the derivative squared. It's basically your Pythagorean theorem uh, from vectors, the magnitude of a vector. Uh, alright, so I'm going to, so you AB people, if, unless you're just like really curious about error uh, estimations and, and stuff on, on series. I'm going to look at BC trends. And let me see if I can find a BC series question that also asks about errors. Let's look at 2016, just randomly grab one. Um. There we go. Number D. It's pretty common, pretty common, pretty common. Uh, the thing is, I don't know, I don't think I can jump, I may have to do this whole problem. I might have to do, I think I'm gonna have to do this whole problem. Is that okay? BC, you could use a good series question, right? Alright, so um, AB, you can take a little break for a minute. I'm gonna answer this for the BCs. This is from the 2016 exam. Um, and it's always number six. You're gonna get a series question for number six. Uh, I don't need to put it on the same page as that. And so uh, I'm gonna take a minute to copy these. You do have this in your packets. If you have your FRQ packets with you, you can find this one. I have no idea what number this is as far as the, the renumbered versus one thousand something. Um. But this is from 2016. Number six and I'm going to get that screenshotted and ready to do and y'all can kind of look over it. I'll leave it on the screen right there for you. Y'all can look over it and kind of game plan while I'm getting everything screenshot it for you. Alright, so I think I'm ready to start looking at this one. Alright, so uh, let's see, the function f has a Taylor series about one. It converts to x for all x along the interval of convergence. It does not matter if one is one, if common one is that, and the nth derivative is that formula. Right, the first four non-zero terms and the general term. There are only three ways that you can write a Taylor series that we know of in this class. One of them is the brute force formula, which is what we're gonna use on this one. The nth derivative at the center over n factorial times x minus one or x minus the center to the n power. That's what we're gonna have to use here. You also need to be able to um. Good to see you, Harris. I'll see you later. I'll see you tomorrow. Um. You also need to be able to manipulate edx, sinx and cosine x to create a new series based on those memorized series. And then there's also the um. You also need to um, what's the other one? Oh, if it's a geometric sum, if your series, or if your function represents the infinite geometric sum. You have to be able to, to piece that or, or decipher that as a series. So this one, uh, they tell you f of one and f prime of one. So I know my first two terms are going to be one plus negative one half over one factorial, which obviously you don't have to go over one factorial times x minus one to the first plus. Now I need f double prime and f double prime of one. I'm gonna use this formula. That's when n is two. So negative one squared would be positive one, two minus one factorial. That's one over two squared is four. And so that's my second derivative at once. That's gonna be one fourth over two factorial times x minus one to the tooth. And then finally, my third term, I need f triple prime at one. That's gonna be negative one cubed, which is negative. Three minus one is two, two factorial is two. Over two cubed is eight. That cleans up to negative one fourth. Over three factorial. X minus one to the third. And it does ask for the general term. So I need to do plus 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 dot dot dot. Plus, and then my nth derivative. Is this. So this whole expression. This whole expression right here is the numerator. So it's going to be negative one. To the n times n minus one factorial over two to the n. That's the numerator. Over n factorial. Times x minus one to the nth. There is your general term. Um, and I'm gonna stop with that. I'm gonna leave that exactly where it is. Um, my wife's somewhere already. She went shopping. I thought she was gonna be gone a long time ago. Sorry, I lost my train of thought. Okay, so so I would leave it like that for part A. However, inside my coefficient of x minus one to the nth, inside that. I see an n minus one factorial over an n factorial, which does clean up. Um, and so I think because we're, let me look at the other questions. I'm pretty sure we're gonna be using this answer. Um, the series for F at x one has a radius converses to find the interval of convergence. The Taylor series about one, which is what we just found, can be used to represent F of one point two as use the first three. Non-zero terms to approximate. So we are going to use this. In subsequent questions. So I think I'm going to go ahead and clean that up. I'm gonna clean this up. So that's gonna be one minus one half times x minus one to the first. One fourth over two factorial is gonna be one eighth. X minus one to the tooth. Three factorial is six times four is twenty-four. So minus one over twenty-four. X minus one to the three. Um, what's my pattern here? Uh, uh, plus, and then I'm going to simplify the rest of this. Hey Grant, my family just came in. How you doing buddy? Then I'm gonna clean this up. So I have negative one to the n. N minus one factorial over two to the n. Times n factorial. And this is where I'm gonna be able to do some simplifying. Oh, I messed up. That's my general term. I need to make sure that that is kind of moved over with the little dot 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 before it. There we go. Okay, n minus one factorial, that is one number less than n factorial. That is gonna cancel everything except the factorial. So my general term ends up being negative one to the n. Over n times two to the n. Times x minus one to the n. And I think that's going to make things a little bit easier for us and later problems. So. So there's my cleaned up part A finally, and I'm gonna move on to B. They give you the radius of convergence. They ask for the interval of convergence. Normally, if they ask for the interval of convergence, we have to run through the ratio test. But since they gave us the radius, they saved us from having to run through the ratio test. If I'm centered at x equals one. That's my center. That says center and my radius is two. That means I can go two units in each direction. One plus two is three. And I could subtract two over here. Do you need something Molly? Does mommy need card stock? Looking my, look on my side of the. Over there by the printer. There, I think there's some over there. Um. So so I know my radius of convergence goes, or my interval of convergence goes from negative one to three. The question is, do we include negative one and do we include three? And that's where we're gonna have to do a lot of work here. And it does say show the word that leads to your answer. Uh, I'm gonna go back and get that general term. Uh, my series is this. I'm I'm gonna copy and paste because I can do that. This is my general term. Oh wait. Hang on a second. General term doesn't match. Yeah, that's fine. We'll we'll use this one. Um. Okay, so here's my general term. And it's really, this is where my hesitation was. My series, the first two terms, F of one and F prime of one, don't follow that pattern. So I think what I would do is I'm gonna write my series as uh, my first term was one. My second term was minus one half. X minus once uh, to the first power. Plus, and then we have the pattern here. And starting at two. Going to infinity. So we have n equals zero, n equals one. And this, and we're going to test this guy, this guy right here. I'm curi- curious if that will converge when x is negative one and when x is three. So let's test those. Hey buddy, I need to work, okay? Can you watch TV or something? No, we don't. So that'll be negative one to the n. I'm plugging in negative one. That'll be times negative two to the n. Negative one minus one is negative two times over n times two to the n. And let's clean that up. At the series, I'm gonna break apart negative two to the n. As negative one to the n times two to the n. And that's gonna be really nice. Because now these cancel. And negative one times negative one to the n times negative one to the n. That is going to equal negative one to the two n. Which is the same as negative one squared to the n. That's just gonna equal one. So when I plugged in negative one for x, I ultimately ended up with the series of just one over n. And that diverges. You don't have to prove that. You're expected to know the harmonic series that diverges. So we will not include negative one. Now I need to test. X equals three. I wanna test x equals three. This is gonna clean up a little bit nicer. Negative one to the n, three minus one is two to the n. Over n times two to the n. And when you cancel those two to the ends, we end up with the alternating harmonic, which does converge. The uh. So that's your alternating harmonic series. Which will converge. Um, and so my interval of convergence, make sure you answer the question. My interval of convergence. Is going to be not including negative one. But we will include three. Or you can put that in interval notation, negative one to three with a bracket. Uh, and there is part B. Good so far? Hang on a second. I'll be right back. Alright, you wanna tell them? There's a few in here. Why do you say it like that? That was weird. I think you just scared them. Alright, um, okay, so let's go on and look at C. Grant, I really do need to work those. They have a very important test tomorrow and I don't need you to distract them, okay? Alright. Okay, uh, the Taylor series for F is can be used to represent F of one point two. Use the first three non-zero terms to approximate F of one point two. Uh, so my first term, uh, this is gonna be really nice. This is a really nice question. Um, that assumes you have this done halfway decently. Let's say first three. So I'm gonna grab this. That was my series. Bring that over here for part C. And you asked for series error approximation. We are getting there ever so slowly. Aw, man, why'd I do that? No, I don't want all of that. Aw, shoot. What's happening here? Just cut it. Okay. Paste. Oh no, it's gonna put it right back. Aw, you son of a. This is not working. Bringing you down here. Bring you up here. There, alright. Um, so we're using the first three non-zero terms. So we're taking taking these three terms here and we're gonna plug in one point two and make this easy. That's gonna be one minus. Actually, I'm gonna do this. I am approximating F of one point two. And I believe on series, they are actually very picky about you using that approximation symbol. That's one minus half of one point two minus one to the first power. Plus one eighth of one point two minus one to the second power. And we're done. Don't do anything with that. Um, if they ask us something later, we're simplifying. That may be beneficial. I'll cross that bridge when we get there, but that is an acceptable answer. So we're gonna stop. Um, and that's kind of a nice question. Uh, now if you got to part C. And you're like, well, shoot, I didn't have part A. I wasn't able to do that. Then go back and make some credible attempt at A. And hopefully you will be able to get your credit on part C, even if your answer for A is incorrect. Uh, and then let's look at uh. The last question, and this is why I wanted to do this problem. It says, show that the approximation in part C is within point zero zero one of the exact value. And that's an error question. So we want to show that the approximation. The approximation we got has an error that is less than or equal to zero point zero zero one. Which is the same thing as one over one thousand, if you like thinking in fractions. Um, and with error, there are two ways that we can get error, or approximate error. One is Lagrange and one is the alternating series test. There is the integral test for error bound, but. I almost never see that. And so I'm not gonna worry about that one right now. Um, that's almost, i- it's always been Lagrange or alternating series. And alternating series one is the easier one. This is an alternating series, which means my error. Is always less than my very first omitted term. And if you can remember on part C. We use these first three terms to approximate F of one point two. Which means my error bound is gonna come from that fourth term, the absolute value of that fourth term. But before I do that, I wanna write this pesky little annoying sentence. Um, and that annoying sentence is that the Taylor series. For F is an alternating. Series whose terms decrease in magnitude. To zero. Terms decrease in magnitude to zero. So basically you're saying it's an alternating series and it converges. An alternating series whose terms decrease in magnitude to zero. That's just one of those canned phrases. You need to be able to spit out on something like this. Just like the canned phrase, if they, if you see a function that's described as differentiable, you immediately want to say. F is differentiable, therefore F is continuous. This is kind of in that same category of canned phrases that they like to see on these questions. And so uh, my error. Is going to be less than or equal to my very, the absolute value, my very first omitted term. So that's gonna be one. One over twenty-four times one point two minus one cubed. And then we need to show that that is less than one over a thousand or point zero zero one. And we do that by simply writing, hey, that's less than point zero zero one. And that would actually be sufficient. You don't have to do the arithmetic to to confirm that we actually do have something that's less than point zero zero one. That said, I feel better if I do enough simplifying to show that this is less than one over a thousand. And so uh, that's gonna be negative one. Actually, I can get rid of the negative. Um, that's gonna be one over twenty-four times point two and point two is one fifth to the third power. That's one over twenty-four times five cubed. Five cubed is one hundred twenty-five. And is twenty-four times one twenty-five? More than a thousand? And I think it is. One twenty-five times twenty-four. Oh yeah, it's gonna be much more. It's gonna be like close to two thousand. Okay, so now now I feel really good. That is definitely less than one over a thousand. And there is our error approximation. How do we feel there? Holy cow, there's a lot of. Sediment in the bottom of that coffee. Okay. What else do we have? A B's, if you're if you're still there listening, I think we're done with the 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 series question. Y'all should have taken series. Those things are fun. They can be C. Series are fun. Matter of fact, my B C students were were uh. Glad that we finished with series because it was a nice, easy way to finish the year. Do we have any other questions you want to talk about? Particle motion. And what is it that you recommend? We have stored in our calculator as notes for the test. Okay, so um. Store, I would put anything that is not already a pre-made function. Uh, so don't spend time if you have it. Okay. I'm gonna go back to that cram sheet because this is where I would look. Um. Go back to my homepage, the cram sheet. And y'alls. I I need to link the edited, like the B C cram sheet and the and the A B cram sheet. Okay, so things that I would put in my calculator. Uh, that I think there are things that might be useful. Um. Okay, don't do something like. The inverse trig derivatives. Because if you're not sure, i- this is if you have a CAS calculator. Now, if you don't have a CAS calculator. Uh, if you're if you're inspired, does not have the letter C A S at the top right there in the corner. Um, then maybe you want to put the derivatives in, but the CAS calculators can actually do derivatives. And so. Uh, if you hit shift minus, it opens up the derivative template. And you could say, uh, let's see, the derivative of inverse tangent. Oh, yeah, there it was. So you can, you can literally type into your calculator. And ask it, what is the derivative of inverse tangent? And as soon as I hit the enter button. Where there it is, as soon as I hit the enter button, it will tell you that the derivative of inverse tangent is one over. X squared plus one. Uh, and so. Don't store that in your calculator because calculator already does it. Now, if you finish your. Calculator active free response questions early and you're sitting there waiting for them to call time so you can open up the other four questions. Then you can just go to your calculator punching. Hey calculator, what's the derivative of inverse tangent? What's the derivative of inverse sine and copy those down? Now, ones you might want to store in your calculator in a note sheet would be, and this is gonna sound contradictory. But I would maybe store the derivative of secant x because. While your calculator, you can go to the calculator. And where's the enter button? There it is. You can go to the calculator. And oh. Bella's joining from an outside source. There she is. You crazies. Alright, uh, so I can ask the calculator for the derivative of inverse secant. Can y'all read that? Uh, of secant. However, when I hit enter, the calculator gives you the answer in terms of sine and cosine, which is really weird. It won't give you the secant x tangent x sensor that we should know. So um. So maybe put in the derivative of of secant and the derivative of. Cosecant, and I believe it even does it for the derivative of tangent. It's very frustrating because the derivative of tangent. You know it as secant squared. But if you punch that in the calculator, it's probably gonna say one over cosine squared and it does. Like if I ask how they're for the derivative of inverse uh, of just regular tangent, can y'all see it there? Uh, there. And it gives it to me as one over cosine squared. So so it does some weird things sometimes. Uh, other things that might be worth saving on your calculator. Would be things like maybe the formula for a disc and a washer. Um, maybe your. And and I don't know, this is a lot to put in, like this block right here. Where it describes what an inflection point, what a. What a a max or min is, so like a local minimum, the derivative goes from negative to zero to positive or negative to undefined to positive. Um, or the second derivative is positive, it'd become uh, uh, concept up at an inflection point. Um, so those, your derivative rules maybe, boy, they wrote these weird, the product rule, they did U D V D X. Plus D U that DXV. I might retype this part. This is, whatever. This is fine. Um, the mean value theorem. Oh, that's the average value theorem. That's so confusing. Why do they do that? But uh, but you might want to put things like that, like the average value theorem or the mean value theorem, which is down here. So here's the formula associated with the mean value theorem. Um, things like this. Total distance is the antiderivative of uh. The magnitude of velocity, something that's not on this cheat sheet, uh, cheat sheet, on this cram sheet is uh. How to know if speed is increasing or decreasing. Speed increases when um. Vosic acceleration at the same sign decreases when they have opposite signs. Um, so things like that. So so just. The the things your calculator cannot do on its own or what I would uh, store. In the calculator. Uh, and I'm gonna tell you this again. I told you this a long time ago. Don't spend like an hour tonight plugging things in your calculator because you're gonna find that it's not as beneficial as you think it will be. Um, and you would probably be better off studying that hour rather than. Trying to game the system by putting things in your calculator. Uh, if you have time to do it, then by all means do that. But don't, don't think that's going to. Uh, turn you from a three to a five or a two to a three. Uh, if you have time to do it, then by all means do that, but don't, don't think that's going to, um, turn you from a three to a five or a two to a three or something like that. Because it's not going to have that big of a difference. The people who write the tests are very good at writing the tests and they know that students can do this. And so they kind of write the tests in a way that it's not going to be that beneficial. Uh, let's see, you also asked about particle motion. So you want to do another particle motion question? Is that right, Madeline? I think that's not a bad idea because they have been hammering, hammering particle motion. This is the B C one. And we'll go back to A B. And I did, I don't know if y'all saw this, but, um, I did in Google Classroom. Link videos of me explaining the two free response questions. And so you may want to look at that because I did talk about the, uh, particle motion problem that y'all did. So let's see, particle motion, this column, let's do. Uh, let's do the two thousand. Should we do eighteen or nineteen? I think two thousand nineteen has a chart. Should we do that one? I don't know. Let's see what eighteen is. Eighteen number two. That means calculator. This is a nice one. I may do both of them. Is that, is that going to hurt your feelings if I do two problems? Two thousand eighteen. And I think I'm just going to talk about the two thousand eighteen problem, uh, rather than actually solve it. And then two thousand nineteen is one that I personally graded. That was my first year as an AP reader. And so I'm pretty familiar with that one. Um, all right. So this question, a particle moves along the X axis with that velocity. Very first thing I would do is I would go to my calculator and I would define this in my calculator. Define in calculator. A few people, when you were taking the, uh. The particle motion quiz last week, you weren't defining correctly. You have to remember that it's menu one, one. Actions, define, and you have to, you have to remember, say, V of T equals like that. And then after V of T equals, then you type in the equation. Some people were not writing the V of T equals. They were writing define. And they were typing in the equation, but they weren't labeling it as anything. And so they were having a hard time. So make sure you, you know how to define stuff. Uh, so I'll define that in the calculator. The park was at position X equals negative five when T is zero. That is a position. Question, or that is your initial position at time zero. My X coordinate is negative five. And then A, find the acceleration. It gave me velocity. And so if I want the acceleration at three, the acceleration at three. You're expected to do this straight in the calculator with your derivative at a point command. Make sure, make sure that you write down on paper that you are doing the derivative of your velocity function at three. And then just use the derivative at a point command. Go to your calculator. Uh, if you have a non CAS version, I believe it's called the numeric derivative, but it's in the same spot. It's menu for. Uh, and for the CAS is this menu for two, uh, calculus and then derivative at a point. And then you write down the answer, but you must connect your written work to the function they actually gave you. If you write A of three and then write the answer, you may not get your point. Because you're not communicating that we actually did the derivative of velocity. I know that seems obvious, especially if you get the right answer. But you want to write down V prime of three equals, and then I'm just going to say put in calculator. And this one, this question for, this was two thousand eighteen, I think. A B number two. Um. Number B, find the position at time three. It wants the actual X coordinate of this function, of this particle at time three. Here's that setup that we've talked about so much. We have the initial position. We have the derivative of position because velocity is the derivative of position. So we have X prime. We have an initial condition. This is going to be your initial condition. Plus antiderivative zero to three. Of your derivatives, uh, of your, um. Derivative of position. And I probably should. I probably should have just gone straight to saying zero to three of V of T. You want all of your explanations, all of your work connected explicitly to what they gave you. They gave me velocity. So I want my work to include velocity. Um, simply because that's what they gave me. And then again, you'll put this in the calculator. So those are two very quick questions. You're doing them both directly into the calculator. You just have to make sure you show your setup. Never, ever, ever write just the answer. Uh, so there is numbers A and B, C. We'll talk about. C and D. And C, again, we're going to go straight to the calculator, evaluate that definite integral and evaluate this other definite integral and then interpret the meaning of each one. Um. And you should recognize these. And this is where if you have these saved, if you have notes saved in your calculator, it could come in handy if you don't recognize these. This is total distance. Total distance. I'm going to go back to the prompt here. Particle moves along the X axis. There's no mention of units or time. So anytime you're explaining something or, or, or interpreting something. You want to make sure you include units and stuff. However, there are no units here. This is total distance traveled. On the interval zero, less than T, less than three point five. If you do not do the absolute value, the definite integral of velocity itself, not the absolute value of velocity, but just velocity. That's your displacement. That's the object's displacement. On the interval zero to three point five. And, and so, and again, you'll just throw those in the calculator. And I think I've mentioned it. I, I know I've mentioned this to you. Absolute values. Look next to the nine. There's this little button next to nine right here. So go to nine, hit that button. And a template, templates will pop up and absolute value is somewhere on that screen. Uh, for me, on this calculator, it's the top left. So if you look at that top row all the way on the left, you will see the absolute values on some of the calculators. It's on the bottom row far right. Sorry, that's actually top right. So top right, bottom row, far left for the, uh, for some other calculators, but it's going to be in there somewhere. Uh, these calculators do have an operating system that can be updated over time. Ca- uh, TI will sometimes, um. Throw in little additions and, and stuff. And so if you're using an older operating system, it may be somewhere else, or this may be an older operating system. I don't know. But it's going to be there somewhere. All right. Number D, a second particle moves along the X axis with this position. So we have a new particle. At what time T are the two particles moving with the same velocity? So that means I need the velocity of both of them. Um. If I do the derivative of X two of T. And I'm going to put a prime. That looks really confusing because I don't like that prime mark with the two because it looks like a one. I'm busy. So do it. Um. And so that's going to give me the velocity of particle two, which this is a calculator question, but hopefully you don't need the calculator to do this derivative graph, please. Yeah. Um. And so I can do the derivative of my second particle very easily, and we simply need that to equal the given V of T. So we need two T minus one to equal the velocity function was originally given. Hey, kids, can y'all please? Hey, no, you're, you're playing, Grant. Seriously. Go find something to do, please. Um, so write down the equation, then we'll go to the calculator. I would graph this. And I would probably already have it in F one and graph this and F two. Really doesn't matter if you do it in F one or F two. But you would graph both of those and then find the intersection, write down the answer. Make sure you answer to three decimal places. They want that three decimal place accuracy. And, and so, uh, I talked to you earlier about how to fix that, but, um. If you're not seeing three decimals, you need to change your settings so that your calculator is displaying at least three decimals. Um. Yeah. So, so just make sure that three decimals. And there's that one. Is that a good, that was kind of a quick one. Was that a good one, Madeline? Is that kind of what you wanted? Um. Can we look at the two thousand nineteen problem? Do you want to do another one? Or do you want to talk about something different? Do the nineteen one? Two thousand nineteen. This one. And it's a, um, look at all those words. How exciting. Um. This is a good one. This is, this really is a good one to look at. So, uh, because this one also gets in some theorems and stuff. So we have a. Table of values for particle P's velocity. And. I'm going to put this on the screen. I'm going to screenshot all this and I'm going to give you a minute to read it. Uh, I think y'all can read that. Can y'all read that? Do I need to zoom in a little bit? And look at A and B and see if y'all can figure out what you're going to do for A and B. These are, um. Fairly common, fairly predictable questions. Somewhere you will see these on the AP exam. I'll be back in a second. Y'all can look at it. All right. So let's check this one out. Uh, A and B are completely independent of, uh, uh, particle motion. So the fact that this is velocity and this is particle motion doesn't come into play at all. And you're thinking for parts A and B. I don't think does. No, it does not. Um, and so we have a velocity function. They do mention that velocity is differentiable right here. Um, and then it says justify why there must be a time T for which V prime, the acceleration of particle P equals zero. So when would V prime equals zero? And this is going to be your mean value theorem. Your mean value theorem, more specifically roles theorem, because we are looking for a slope of zero. But anytime we're trying to guarantee that the derivative equals something. We want the derivative of velocity or. The derivative of P. The derivative of P's velocity to equal zero. Um, that's going to be a mean value theorem. And if you're going to use mean value theorem, you first have to establish that the function meets all the conditions for mean value theorem. And that is that the function must be differentiable and continuous. They described V as differentiable, therefore it is continuous and I have to write that. So does this happen? And I'm going to start off by saying VP of T is differentiable. Therefore. Continuous VP of T is continuous. Don't say it is continuous. It would probably be okay. But don't use pronouns at all for the, uh, until after lunch tomorrow. So pronouns don't exist. Uh, all right. So that's true. Now, what I want to do is I want to find any two points between which the slope is zero. In other words, VP needs to equal the same thing. And we VP of T is equal to fifty five twice and happens to be on the interval that they recommended. And so I would say therefore, um, VP. Prime of T must equal VP of two point eight. Minus VP of zero point three, all over two point eight minus three. And that would be fifty five minus fifty five over two point eight minus point three, not three. And that does indeed equal zero and we're done. That's it. We've shown that the function is differentiable, therefore the function is continuous, therefore. Um, and you could say the acceleration of particle P, which is the, the derivative of P's velocity equals zero. I guess more, uh, detailed, I could say for some T, we don't know where, for some T. Point three, less than T, less than two point eight. But we didn't have to do that last little bit, but that's your mean value theorem, also roles theorem. Let's go on to part B. Use a trapezoidal sum with the three subintervals to approximate the value of that integral that they provided. And so this integral's approximation would be, and, uh, trapezoids. Trapezoids, the area of a trapezoid. Is half the height of the trapezoid times the sum of the bases. The height is your delta X, or in this case, delta T, and the bases. Are your function values. On a general. So my first delta T is point three. What are we doing here? Ooh, be careful here. Be careful. My second one from point three to one point seven is one point four. And my last one is one point one. And I wonder how many students kicked into autopilot and went all the way to four, but they asked us to stop. At the interval from one point seven to two point eight. So make sure you pay attention to that because you may just hit a groove and, and go all the way to the end. And so this approximation will be. Half of the height of my first trapezoid is point three and the bases are zero and fifty five. My next trapezoid, half of my delta T is one point four. Of fifty five minus twenty nine. Or fifty five plus negative twenty nine. And then my last one, half of one point one. And then the bases are negative twenty nine and fifty five. And stop. We're done. We don't need any more of that. Um, now I'm going to very quickly, I don't have these answers memorized. A B F R Q solutions. I'm looking, uh, the solutions because I want to get the answer to this because I know it comes in play later. Number two. The answer is. Forty point seven five. So the answer to this one's forty point seven five. Even though you have a calculator, you really don't need to do that. So I'll, if you write it down and put a line through it, let's go on to C. And in part C, they bring into play a second particle. This is particle Q. Um, now at this point, because they have brought in another particle. We need to be very specific with how we label our velocities and positions and accelerations. Uh, previously on parts A and B, if you simply wrote. Uh, like on A, if you simply wrote V of T and A of T, that was okay because at that point there was not a second particle. Now, they've introduced Q. So now if you only write V of T, you wouldn't get it, uh, get the credit because you haven't mentioned specifically what, what particle you're looking at. Um, so we have this function, find the time intervals. During which the velocity of Q is at least sixty meters per hour. So we want the velocity of Q. To be at least, that means you need to be greater than or equal to sixty, and we're going to find those times. Then it says, find the distance traveled. Distance traveled? That's the antiderivative of the magnitude of velocity Q. On that interval, when we're at least, so I need these answers because those answers will be the limits of integration. Now I graded this question. I graded over a thousand of these. And for the distance traveled, by the way, if you wrote this, you got a point for the definite integral of the magnitude of velocity. You didn't even have to have the correct limits of integration. If you had any definite integral of the velocity of particle Q, you got that point. So this is why you always write stuff down, always a little bit of game planning. Because sometimes your thought process or, or your game planning can actually get you credit. You don't have to have anything else, um, in that case to, to get that first point for the setup. I'm going to go to my calculator and I have already, while I was screenshotting earlier, I have already defined this function. And noticed that I've defined it as V Q of T. You can do that. You can use multiple letters. It doesn't have to be a simple V of T or F of X or something like that. So I have it defined. So I have it defined and I'm going to go to my graph screen now and I'm going to graph. Buddy, I'm serious. And can you please go somewhere else? Give me a hug. Why don't you go take a nap with mama? She would like that.
Okay.
Alright, alright, so um, I'm going to graph VQ of X and I'll type it into my graph screen exactly like that. VQ of X, I guess y'all can read that. Um, and ooh, that's weird. Um, we're on the interval 0 to 4. Oh, it says at least 60. So I'm going to have to graph y equals 60, which means I'm going to have to change my scale a lot. So, uh, I'm going to go to my window menu, window settings. And I'm going to change my X. So we're only on the interval 0 to 4. So I'm going to make sure I'm looking only on X is 0 to 4. And then I need to include 60. So I think I'll go from 0 all the way up to, um, I'm going to just go up to 100. 0 all the way up to 100 and there is my graph. And I need to find the intersections and I can see that between those two intersections, that velocity function in blue is north of 60. So I'll go menu, analyze, intersection. And I've got one at 1.866, menu analyze intersection. Be careful buddy. Intersection and I'm at 3.519. Okay, so I have those two. Now keep in mind, these are intermediate steps. I'm going to have to use those intersections. I'm going to have to use those intersections in the next step. So I want to store those. I want to make sure that my next step gives me as much accuracy as I can possibly get. So I'm going to highlight it, control store. My first one is now stored for A. My second one at 3.519 is now stored for B and I'm going to, um, write these answers right here. So, uh, the answer to the inequality is 1.866 is less than equal to t is less than equal to 3.519. And then I'm going to store that one is stored for A. And this one is stored for B. And because I have now labeled those as A and B on my written work, this definite integral gives me full credit. All I have to do now is write the answer to it. So I'm going to go back to my calculator. And I'm going to, I go to my compute screen, uh, shift plus for the antiderivative, A to B of the absolute value, and that button's next to the nine, absolute value of VQ of T, DT, whoops. One more tab DT and I'll punch it in like that. And this is where storing those values of A and B come in handy. Cause it's not only faster to punch in the calculator at this point, it is also more accurate. And I'm getting 106.109. I don't like that answer. I may record a video of me setting up a calculator as best I can because I don't have my nice software with me. My calculator showed me exactly six digits. Can you see that? Is that visible there? Yeah, there. So I'm getting six digits. I don't like that. I like to see a lot more. This calculator settings have been reset to the factory default, which is to display only six digits. Now we only need three decimal places. So that's fine, but I like to see a lot more. So I'm going to go to menu. No, I'm not. That's not the right spot. So on my, uh, on my calculator screen, I'm going to hit document. And then option seven is settings and status. And then you want to change document settings. So you're wanting to get to that document setting spot. I'm going to hit enter. And that top entry float six, that means that this calculator is going to display six digits. Now, if the answer is like four billion, it will, it will show you four billion, but if it's a decimal answer, it will only show you six digits. That means if it's 1,000 point something, it's going to do 1,000 points and only two decimals. And that's bad because we have to be able to see six. So I'm going to change that instead of floats six. I just want to go all the way up to the top and I'm just going to choose the option that is float. And if I just do float now, when I hit enter on that integral, now I'm seeing a whole lot more and I really like that. I really like that option. So, uh, the answer is actually 106.1087, which does round to 109. 106.1087. I like to see that fourth decimal. This makes me happy. I like to see the fourth. Really, I like to see the fifth and the sixth as well. Uh, just for personal reasons. So there's that answer and I think we're done. That is, that is it. Now question D, this is the main reason I wanted to spend time talking about this one, even though we've already done a particle motion. Question B made me very, very, very angry on how they awarded points. They say at time t equals zero, particle Q is at a position of negative 90. So I know my position of particle Q at zero is negative 90. Use the result from part B and the function VQ from part C, find the distance between P and Q at time 2.8. That means I need to know what is the position of particle P at 2.8? And what is the position of particle Q at 2.8? And for both of these, we're going to do that net change theorem setup. And I, since we're dealing with Q more recently, that's going to be my position of Q at zero plus the antiderivative of the velocity of particle Q from zero to negative 90. And I'm going to punch that in really quick. So negative 90 plus shift plus, uh, zero to negative 90. How about 0 to 2.8? That's bad. 0 to 2.8 of VQ of T, DT, and I am getting 45.9376. I need to fix that up. The limit of integration, negative 90. 2.8. But we have 45.9376. The position of particle P at 2.8 is going to be the initial position of particle P. This is that exact same setup plus 0 to 2.8 of the velocity of particle P. The initial position of particle P right here, article P is at the origin at time t equals zero. That means the initial position of particle P is zero. So that's zero. This integral, 0 to 2.8 of VP of T, that is the trapezoid approximation we did in part B. So we got 40.75. And so the answer for this is going to be 0 plus 40.75. And if you're really good at your zero plus tables, that's 40.75. And now the distance between those two, um, you just subtract them. So the distance between is the position of particle P, Q, 45.9376 minus the position of particle P, 40.75. And that is minus 40.75. I'm getting 5.1876. And that is full credit. That is full credit. Uh, how do we feel about that one? Is that good, bad, ugly? So the last two questions, we're dealing with particle motion. Um, now I'm going to share with you why I got so angry with this question. The point breakdown was this on part C, it was a three point question. You got one point for, and I can't remember. I, I can go back to my scoring notes, which are in my classroom to get more details on this. But this was worth one point. Now I don't know if that means writing it down or if, if you had a value for it. Uh, the position of particle Q was worth the second point. And then obviously the answer was worth the third point. Um, so, so I don't have any huge issues with that, but here's where I got mad because I had to take points off of students. They did not earn their points if they did this, if they said the distance between is, and they would write my, uh, what was the initial position of, of Q? Negative 90. So, so this is negative 90. So they, so they did this. They said negative 90 plus the antiderivative from 0 to 2.8 of the velocity of particle Q. And that setup gives you the position of particle Q and then they subtract it from that 40.75. And they wrote the correct answer of 5.18 and I'll round that up to eight. Students who wrote that, and this made me very angry. I wrote like a, a full one page letter to the question leader explaining why this wasn't fair. They didn't get three points for that because they never explicitly wrote down the value of 43.937. The, the readers were told to look for that exact value. And so even though this is the position of particle Q and it is represented, please grant. Just leave it on table. Um, so even though we do have a position of particle Q represented correctly, they did not get all three points and that made me very angry because the question doesn't ask you for the position of particle Q. The question asks for the distance between them. I still very, 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 I nearly believe that should have been full credit, but it was not. Um, so all that to say for the eight of you who are here watching. Um, and well, some people are going to watch this tonight. Some people said they were going to watch it later. So that'll work too. Don't skip steps. Don't try to do too much at once in the calculator. Uh, I think this is kind of rare that, that they penalize you for not ask, answering a question that was, wasn't asked. Um, they don't ask for the position of particle Q and for them to hold it against you made me angry, but they did, they did. And I didn't have a choice but to, uh, give people to, of course, students who were smart enough to set that up, probably were going to get a four or five anyway. And that one point wasn't going to make a big difference, but still it's the principle of the thing. Uh, let's see. Um, so that's two particle motion. That's enough. What else? What else? What else? Any other questions? Anything do you want to look at? And he taught us, we did differential equations, we did area volume. We did particle notion, BC, we did a series question. Is there anything else you want to look at? No? Do y'all want to try to do that cahoot that I was talking about earlier? Can you do a cahoot? In Google Classroom? Can that happen? I don't know. Yes, sure. Sure. Why not? Let's try it. Cahoot.com. Let's see, I need to, I need to share this with y'all anyway. These are good, quick questions. These will be a little bit easier. Let's see, I need to log in. I thought you were going to go take a nap with mama. What happened to that? AP exam review. Yeah, there's 14 questions. Let's host it live. And we'll see how this works. Uh, start. So if y'all want to, this'll work. Swatch. I don't know.
Okay, class, today we're going to learn some basic objects.
Basic objects.
So we're going to learn what a pyramid looks like.
Pyramid?
A pyramid looks like.
You're such an nerd. Come on, let's move. Hey, hey, they're trying to stay. Alright, I'm going to go ahead and get started. Oh, we're not putting my coffee. Don't we go over there? No, here it is. Okay. Here comes quick questions. Please stop. You're going to spit sprite all over the computer and I won't be happy. Aw, no music. No music. I go full screen. There's no sound. Alright, see, these are quick. These are quick. Uh, yep, I'm not, not surprised. Some people fell for number for the red one. Derivative of natural log, you have to make sure the top is the derivative of the bottom and that works for antiderivatives as well. When you do the antiderivative, if the top is the exact derivative of the bottom, that is your natural log setup. So there we go. Alright, um, okay, now the green one was, is tempting. The green one will be if you actually evaluated the antiderivative for these problems, when you're doing the derivative of the antiderivative. Uh, that's when you just plug straight in and you have to remember to multiply by the derivative of what you substituted. This would be the representation of the actual antiderivative. Then what you would need to do, if you got to this step in green, then you would take the derivative of that answer to get the answer to the original question. So I told you, these are quick. Good questions. I think they're all quick. F prime changes from positive to negatives? That would be a local maximum, not a local minimum. The, the slope changes from positive. That means you're increasing to negative means you're decreasing. That's a local minimum, maximum. Derivative of tangent X.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, the attention is second squared. Secant X is the derivative of secant X. Again, these are on that little cram sheet thing. You just need to make sure you study those and have those ready for tomorrow. Antiderivative of sine X. Uh, one over root, one minus X squared. That's the derivative of arc sine. That's the relationship between arc sine and its derivative. Uh, yeah, negative cosine X. Very good. Luke Gibson. Let's see, given the velocity, how do you find the speed of the object at time 3? Yeah, and this one I thought was going to be, uh, y'all done. That's pretty good. Uh, speed is the magnitude of velocity. Speed is the absolute value of your velocity. The green one, I thought more people would go for that one. Um, that's if you want to know if speed is increasing or decreasing. So it's related to speed. But comparing the signs of velocity and acceleration is, is how you tell if the speed is increasing or decreasing. Same signs, then speed increases. If velocity acceleration of opposite sign, speed decreases. Uh, so not as many people fell for that as I thought would. So I guess that's good. How do you find total distance over an interval when you are given velocity? Very good. Very good. We just talked about that a minute ago.
That's moved to the northwest.
Hmm, okay. The graph of F prime, the derivative of F has a local maximum. What's true, derivative, like local max? Okay, so red is possible, but a local, uh, uh, if a function is increasing, then you need the derivative to be positive. You can have a local maximum, yet still be below the X axis. You don't have to have a positive value to be a local maximum. Um, and it is true, if your derivative has a local maximum, that is one of the ways to find inflection points. And you need to know that because you'll probably see that somewhere, whether it's multiple choice or free response. I don't know. But that's something that you probably need to see, uh, be, be ready for. That is one of the ways to justify inflection points. The other way is obviously to, I say, obviously to show that the second derivative changes signs for inflection point. Let's see, how many more are there? Five more, six more. The derivative of secant X. Right? Secant X, secant X, got to know that one. Moving on. Moving on. Antiderivative of cosine 5X. Antiderivative of cosine five X. Cool. The derivative of cosine, the derivative is negative sign. The antiderivative of cosine is positive sign. And then this is that trick that I've shown you. If the five were not there, if you can block out that five, the antiderivative would just be sine of X. However, there is a constant, so you keep the constant in your antiderivative and you divide by it. I've showed it as one fifth instead of sine X all over five. And that would be a U sub problem if you wanted to work it out the long way. Two people. Oh, so sad. If G inverse is the inverse of the function G, then the derivative of G inverse is one. This might be something, Madeline, you're asking about stuff you can put in the calculator? Alright, one over G prime of G inverse, and that is correct. The downtime to do in a cahoot with only five people is very easy to see who missed them. If F is differentiable, use the data in the table below to estimate F prime of five. Four thirds. Okay, F prime of five, five falls between three and six. So the best you can do to get F prime of five is to find the slope between those two points. So that'll be nine minus five divided by six minus three. And that will be four over three. So you want to go as close as possible to that point. Now, last year, maybe last year, maybe in two thousand twenty-two, I can't remember. But there was a question like this in the free response and they actually said, for example, on this problem, instead of just saying, use the data in the table. They actually said, use the average rate of change of F of X on the interval three to six to approximate F prime of five, like they told you what to do. And I think they did that because technically, if you did the slope from two to six, that would be an approximation. It wouldn't be as good. You want to be as close as possible. But I think they may have started telling you what interval to use. So everybody was on the same page and we, everybody got the right.
Answer.
Everybody got the answer they were looking for. Alrighty, how many more? Two more.
Two more seconds, class. Is Zan and I still in here, class?
Yes, I don't think Zan and I are still in here right now, but. Alright, yeah, and y'all, that's just another recognition thing. Nobody took the bait for, nobody took the bait on the. Natural log one, which is good. The reason it's not natural log is because you need the numerator to be the derivative of the denominator. If it were two X over X squared plus one, then the answer would be that red one. Option yellow here, that is if you actually found the derivative of X squared plus one. So you'd make the X squared plus one to the negative one and do the chain rule with it. And we have one more. And.
Raise your hand if you like that.
The derivative of inverse sine of X cubed minus four requires what? Good. It is a chain rule and I think, I think I'm going to actually work that one out. How do I get out of fullscreen? Get out of fullscreen. Just as a practice problem, do y'all have any additional questions or do you feel like we're, we're good for now? And I'm going to see if I can do another session tonight. I'm not going to make any promises. The, the, I might, so I don't know if y'all would want to tune in again. Derivative of inverse sine, Grant. No, not now, not now, not now, not now. The derivative of inverse sine X is that. So that's the template that I'm using. However, I need to replace the X in that formula with X cubed minus four. So this derivative would be one over the square root of one minus the quantity, X cubed minus four squared. But then you need to multiply by the derivative of that integral, which would be three X squared. And that typically is just stuck in the numerator, three X squared over minus all that stuff squared. And if this were multiple choice, you would have to look at the answer choices because they might expand. And clean up that, all that stuff in the square root, you just have to let the answer choices kind of guide you. So. Are we good? Are we good? That was right at two hours. Do we have any other questions? I'll be happy to answer them if we have any.
I do.
Grant. Stop. Are we good?
Yes.
We good?
Yes, sir.
Alright, um, go ahead, Mackenzie. You going to type it or, or say it? Or was that an accident? Alright, I guess that was an accident. Oh, there it was. It's trying to do thumbs up. Alright. Yeah, well then I guess we'll, we'll call this quits. I'll upload the video for, for anybody who wasn't here. Maybe they, they can find time to watch it later. Plus you have the added benefit of being able to speed up time if you watch the recording. And then we'll just kind of see what, what happens tonight as far as being able to have a second session. For those of you. Stop. You're going to, you're going to end up getting me in trouble. I'm going to do something to you that I don't need to do while it's being recorded. I could have probably ended the recording before all that. Alright, okay. Alternating error test includes just the last, the first omitted term. Yes, only the very first omitted terms. If you do the first four terms, then you need the fifth term, the magnitude of that fifth term, and that's it. That is it. And there was a question like that on your, was it on there? Was that on your series FRQ? I can't remember. I think, I think it was. Yeah, it was. There, there was one on the series FRQ. I think it was part C. But, but you can, you can look at that recording that I posted in Google Classroom. Anything else? You good? I was talking to my son. Alright, alright, well then I'm going to go ahead and end this meeting and kick you all out. Study, make sure you go to sleep at a decent time and make sure you eat something decent for breakfast and bring a snack. And I'll be there in the morning. And I will let you know. I'll send out an announcement if I do another session later tonight. We're just going to play it by ear and see what happens. Bye bye. Why can I not end the call? Oh, that guy, it's you people who joined from outside the, is it just me and you now, Sam? Usually I have the option. I can't end the call for everybody. Alright, Sam, I'm kicking you out. Later, but Grant. Oh, okay. Move.
What?
Nah, just remove.